We call our meeting to order. This is a work session with the mayor and borough council, the Borough Seaside Park County Vote and State of New Jersey held on Thursday, August 24th, 2023, advertised for 7:00 p.m. Pursuant to the provisions of New Jersey's Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting was properly provided by transmitting the notice of the meeting for publication in the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger on January 4th, 2023. Notice of the meeting of the governing body has also been posted in the corridor of the municipal building and in the office of the municipal clerk. Roll call?
Councilmember Avil?
Here.
Councilmember Condos?
She is excused this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Kraft?
Here.
Councilmember Dr. McHugh?
Here.
Councilmember Wilk?
Here.
Council President DeMichael?
And he is excused as well.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Thank you.
Number four, we have, for informational purposes, two items. We have an extension request for the Soil Erosion Sentiment Control Plan for the Bayfront Wave Energy Dissipation Project. It's listed as Resolution 223, 229, for consideration at the regular meeting. And this is brought about, as you can see in the cover correspondence, the initial permit will become, is only valid for the three-and-a-half-year time period, and that time period is approaching, and as such, this is a renewal location. There's the cover correspondence as well from Pam Hill, and the reason focuses again on the Army Corps of Engineers, which has had a permit on its desk for much of the summer season.
This is just for the Board of Supervisors, right? Ocean County Board of Supervisors, or is that what it is?
Technically, it's a separate entity, but it's under the jurisdiction of the county, yeah.
Yes.
The soil, anytime there's any potential for disturbance, sediment control plan, which there's one of the agencies you need approval for. We have their approval, and this would renew it.
You're going to have to do it, right?
Yeah.
For three-and-a-half years, yeah. Or another, I guess it gets to another three-and-a-half?
The second item for information, it's confirmation of participation in the fall beach sweeps at Saturday, October 21st. That had been approved previously. There's a resolution that the governing body adopted previously for the October 21st, Saturday morning date, with the Clean Ocean Action and the volunteers, the different organizations Any questions, comments from any governing body members on either A and B or for informational For the work session, we have a discussion for authorization for our attorney's office to review and draft an ordinance. It's amending what have been characterized as the Memorial Bench Program, and it has the prior program, which was adopted back on February 5th, 2015, and then it has some information about it. I know the committee has met several times, and we've had a number of ongoing requests from individuals to up this program, implement it for those who want to donate, whether it's plaques, benches, and this proposal also has options in it for other, more extensive donations if the individuals want to do so, for memory of someone, for memory of a particular event. I don't know, it's up for discussion. I know it came, it's been discussed in several committee meetings. I don't know if anybody wants to add to that where we are?
We just, I was at the meeting where we discussed it, and this is what we discussed, but this is now to go to Mr. Zabarsky for review and to make into an ordinance?
Are we, I thought?
I didn't think so. I mean, when we left the meeting, I didn't think we were at that point, were we, Karen?
So, so what's in red here are the changes that we made, like the draft changes of the current ordinance? And it really, it's up to the committee to see if that's acceptable and/or are we missing anything? For example, in the resolution from 2015, it also mentions other, like memorials, like a flagpole or a playground, which isn't in the ordinance. So do we need to add that into the ordinance as well?
Well, that's where, that's why, this is new, this part is new to me, Mayor. This isn't really what we were discussing. We were just discussing the benches. I think this is included in here just for reference, something that was passed way back in, uh, 2000?
Fifteen.
Was it fifteen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So some of the changes that we discussed in our committee meeting regarding the benches and the plaques was, was reducing the time period from 20 years to 10 years.
Right.
How we're going to notify people when the renewal term is up, decide on a certified letter, and 45 days to renew it. How we're going to accept the applications. We talked about accepting them year-round, we're purchasing the plaques and/or the benches once a quarter, so it's not, you know, too ord-
cumbersome on public works.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So those are the changes that are, that have been drafted in the, in the old ordinance.
The only thing I thought of after looking at it was there's, there's nothing to say who covers the, if there's a theft of the bench. Is it the, uh-
Good point.
I think, I think it-
What is the what?
Something to cover, if there's a theft of the bench.
Somebody steals a bench.
Somebody steals the bench. Why would they want to do that?
It tells about maintenance and loss of damage to the plaque, but it doesn't really address if someone takes the bench. It's like, you just have to say who's responsible for it. I suspect it would be the borough.
It's our bench.
Well, I'm just saying, it should be explicit, state such.
Well, wait, excuse me. If somebody buys the bench, it's still our bench.
Right.
It's like, it's still our bench. You can't say, "I bought the bench, it's mine, get off." No, no, no.
It says right there that it's, you don't own the bench, you have no-
Yeah, you have no legal right to the bench.
Can I say this, it got you in there, Mark?
Yeah, that's true.
No, I, that's a good point, Bill. I just think that the way it's written now is if there's any damage or vandalism, it's the responsibility of the, of the purchaser.
Well, for the plaque, that's-
For the plaque, but, but I would think that if somebody steals a whole bench, we would probably pay for the bench and some, they would then buy the plaque. That's, that's what it says to me. It was not explicit in here, but-
I'd buy two cents.
No, it's-
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know if that needs to be addressed.
What was the other item you're indicating that the committee hadn't yet, what's added?
What you just discussed, all the different, the different gifts that, different ways you can donate things to the towns. I mean, it's, plaques is one thing, but then programs is another.
The more substantial ones.
The fines, the tribute, the substantial gifts.
Yeah.
And we didn't discuss that, but I don't know, we didn't recommend any changes in that either, did we, Karen? Is that part of this thing?
It's, it's in the resolution from 2015, but it was not in the ordinance, so I don't know if you wanted to put it in the ordinance as well.
So that's why it's, I don't think it's more discussion, right?
It wasn't in the old ordinance, so it's something-
Apparently not, it's policy, I guess.
So in the ordinance for February 5th, 2015, it talks about memorials, tributes, substantial gifts, but that never made it into the ordinance. So I guess the question is, you know, do we bake that into the ordinance as well, or do we do everything right now?
Well, the one whose committee it says is, is Councilwoman Condos, correct?
That's right.
Oh, it's yours?
Correct.
Oh, okay. What do you think, though?
Should go over it then, I guess. Again, the only thing I was, didn't like, I don't like the burden of the borough to keep maintaining these things. They have enough work to do. They go around looking at these plaques, always, "Plaque is coming, oh, we've got to replace the plaque today." There's got to be a better way that these plaques are made, can be maintained or something that the borough's not responsible with. Yeah, if somebody steals it, I guess, are we responsible? Are we responsible if somebody steals it, theft, I guess? But if it's worn out and say, "Hey, I don't like the way the plaque looks," we've got to call the borough up and say, "Oh, I'm going to fix the plaque."
If you notice, right, it's like the part that's crossed out.
It says lesser damage of the plaque will be the responsibility of the donor.
Yeah, and maintain has been crossed out, that's the whole point of this thing.
Yeah, okay.
Only the points are there. And the other, this isn't ready for prime time at all, I'll tell you. So what do you want to do? You want to turn, I mean, the two, one person on the committee had a lot of input on this, Jean, and she's not here, and, and our solicitor. No offense to you, unless you want to take it over, but I thought it was for Mr. Zabarsky. Are you going to give it, or Mr. Zabarsky?
Mr. Zabarsky would give it.
So if we were to that point, shouldn't he be here?
Well, it sounds like what the recommendation or suggestion is to carry it, at least for a committee meeting to allow it to be adjusted.
What does everybody think, of the other, your committee?
We go back, we go back to the draw board, okay?
To include maybe these other things, Karen?
I mean, I'm not part of that committee, but it seems like it should be in the ordinance.
Right?
Yeah, I would think so. So anything in that resolution would probably, should be eventually, should be moved into the ordinance to be all-inclusive. I would think so, too. Then the size of the plaque should be determined by the borough. Well, that's the way it is.
Yeah, it used to be our, our, yeah. So, yeah, actually the style and materials determined by Borough Seaside Park. And the benches as well, I might add, because some benches, you know, it doesn't state in here wood, any material, so that's, but that's fine, I think that gives us more latitude.
Yeah, depends upon where it's being placed, you may want something different.
Right, right.
So another change in here was if a person purchased the bench and the plaque, they just have the plaque on the bench. If people want to purchase just a plaque on an existing bench, put two plaques on the bench.
Yeah, two plaques on the left side.
So that, guess it's back to the drawing board, huh?
The drawing board, then, yeah, I guess it is. Is there a degree of pla, is it going to cost more to put the plaques on top of it? On the top of the dunes or on the portland?
Well, you have a range of costs, like 1,000 to 2,500.
Because everybody's like, "I want my plaque on top of, on top of the dunes," because they ask, like, "See, you see, people see the ocean."
So is the only sticking point right now that, in the draft ordinance, it doesn't talk about the other tributes, the, the playgrounds, the flagpoles, the, anything else? Is that the sticking point right now?
I hope so.
It's in the resolution, but not in the ordinance, but we want that in the ordinance, I agree, it should be in the ordinance.
Yeah, all of that should be both in the ordinance.
But does that mean committee meeting, or can the attorney do that, or, I mean, look at that?
I think you go through the committee to iron all of that out.
Okay.
Then come up with a draft ordinance, and then, you know, once you're happy with it, then we'll put the governing body review it before we go on to, you know, our legal staff. Okay.
So carry it for, just have it for possible action at the next meeting, but in the interim, at least have the committee-
Have another meeting, Mr. Mayor, and iron it out.
Which committee is the, it's kind of overlaps for, it's recreation, sort of more geared to public works type.
Public works also.
It's their work, time, and effort and input.
Well, what's, what's your place, Parks, Recreation?
Well, why don't they have, there's enough time, there's a three-week time prior to the next meeting, we could have both committees, some of the membership overlap, and have both look at, and then you can make it both way in.
Can do that, Mr. Mayor.
Is anything else on that issue? The next is a letter from the planning board attorney, and that entails a recommendation from the planning board to amend the code to increase permitted height of above-ground pools, and that came about from a number of different issues had arisen, and the manufacturer's specifications had been reviewed of all the different companies, and all of them were in greater height than the ordinance currently permits. That's the thrust of that recommendation. We now limit the height as 48 inches, and it references the different districts, and typical heights in the manufacturer's recommendations go from 52 to 60 inches, with the most common being 54 inches. That really was the substance of the recommendation, as such, as it reads now, any typical pool, in fact, almost all of them, will trigger a variance application. And also, there's a reference, the rear yard fences now may be 72 inches high, and the board recommended the code to permit above-ground pools not exceeding 60 inches above the adjacent grade, and they would still be buffered from adjacent properties in the zones recommended.
What about bulk? Do these above-ground pools count toward bulk?
It counts toward building block coverage.
It does, above-ground.
We changed that ordinance.
Oh, no, that's, that's in grounds, huh?
Pools, it just states pools.
Even though you can take it down and-
Yes, you can still carve it out. You can pick up papers, too. Say the same thing about them.
Anyone have any input or direction on that? Otherwise, that would be ready to go for the attorney's consideration for drafting. That's, that's where it lies right now.
We went through a statutory review on this, Mayor. The planning board, I think we should move forward, is my recommendation.
It came up again at the planning board, we had this last Monday night's meeting, it was discussed again.
I guess the crux of it is that the prefabricated above-ground pools, I'll call them, because of their added bulk, kind of increases the overall height, you don't even have a fourth of depth, you may have to go up to five foot in height such as 60 inches.
It's triggering a lot of issues.
Yeah, so I think it makes sense to allow it to be, to be allowed that it's 60-inch height, not to exceed 60 inches, I guess is the way you want it.
So any council member have any other comment or objection, or otherwise, that to Mr. Zabarsky and his input of drafting, for the next meeting would be a first reading. Item C is discussion of restricted parking applications, renewal applications. There's a potential first reading of the ordinance at the September 14th regular meeting. And it references the particular parking places involved and has the background documentation that has been submitted to the police department. Any input we have from the chief?
Well, we have the two renewals, so there's both existing spots, and they did turn in their application of dollar placards, so I recommend approval for those two renewals. And down at the new applications on that worksheet, it says 37 I Street, that's a typo, it should be 37 First at, and everything else is correct. The new applications, they all turned in their hardship letter, dollar placards, the $25 date. Another one on Bowiget Boulevard and H Street already have existing spots from previous users, so we say BPW some work, and then we'll have to pay two spots, and I'm recommending that they be approved.
Any questions, comments from the council?
I live by the chief's recommendation of, how do you do it all of them?
All of them have, all of them have handicap placards, right?
So that would be on the first reading on the September 14th meeting, so that goes to Steve's desk as well. The next, item D, is listed for Resolution 2023, 229, at the, this evening's regular meeting, and that entails input received from the engineer's office and the committee as to, for want of a better term, à la carte, of different areas of responsibility, construction as to the J Street Community Center, the need for renovations, in particular, to make it in compliance with the ADA is the primary goal.
What can, what committee was working on this? What committee was?
I guess a number of them, I don't know.
No specific committee?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just a bunch of them.
Yeah, it's been ongoing for some time. We were fortunate, we received the $38,000 grant from the county for the ADA.
County block grant.
Yeah, so that covers a significant portion of that aspect of the plan. Now, from there on, we obviously have limited availability of work, manpower, and personnel, and labor, so, and then we also have a possibility of a contractor, we're separating out, putting the, what do they call them, for the air conditioning.
Are those the split units, or?
The ones that go, yeah.
Yeah, the, now it's on the wall.
Through the wall, yeah. So I don't know, I know Councilman Wilk is familiar with the property, having donated a lot of volunteer labor already, so I don't know what everyone's pleasure is, the engineer referenced the number of items in the letter, and whether they can be separated out to move forward, how it would be best, most efficiently done. The goal was to have the building accessible, but obviously, the air conditioning isn't necessary for the off-season.
I'm trying to figure out the purpose for the resolution. Do we need a resolution for this? I mean, and then it says the kitchen cabinets stalls will be XXX. What's that mean?
So I think the goal was to look at the sheet here, and sort of everyone got to-
Okay, so we're supposed to fill in the XXX, is that our job? And it's not being done by committee, about a committee, because no committee really, we're supposed to do that right here, right now? Is that the purpose of this?
I believe so.
Okay, I don't know, does anybody know? I don't know, I don't understand.
I mean-
We supposed to pick out colors right now, and cabinets?
I think that's a purpose we can give the, the engineer, an idea of what the finishes will be, so that way they can start to procure that.
So we're supposed to do that right now? Really?
Whatever everybody's pleasure is, I'm, I would defer on the colors myself.
Yeah, I'm not a good, I deferred my selections to, to Councilman Wilk. I mean, I told him that I wanted the under, under counter sink, so it makes cleanup a lot easier, and a solid surface, because I'm not crazy about laminates, you know, I just don't think they hold up over time. Beyond that, the color scheme, I bet it, just make sure everything matches.
I mean, we need, how are we going to frame this, this resolution? It doesn't, to me, it doesn't make sense. Please illuminate me, please, because I don't understand what we're doing.
I don't have experience. I guess the intent and purpose is to make sure the project moves ahead. And there was a cover letter that came with this, I don't see it from the engineer, asked the governing body to select the options and whether to move, I know it referenced the air conditioning in there, I don't know about these other more minor details.
Yeah, there was an email from the engineer that went to every member of the governing body, except Councilman Kraft and Councilwoman Condos, that said, "These are the finishes, can you please choose something so we can start to get the, get the cabinets and the countertops, the tile flooring lined up, so when we're ready for construction, we can keep the project moving?" So I know that Councilman Wilk responded to that email, I responded to the email, we made, we made our recommendations of what the, the style of the cabinet should be, and what color the surface should be, and what color the tile floor should be.
Well, we just picked all neutrals, white, tan, gray, that's all.
Try to match the building, the style of the building, the color of the building. If it doesn't matter, I mean, we'll just move it forward.
I'm fine, you know, I don't really care.
Small people, yeah.
I mean, I can tell you what our recommendations are.
Yeah, they're going to fill in the blanks and move, do we want the process as a resolution?
So our recommendations were the shaker-style cabinets to match the, the tenor of the building.
Okay.
For the countertop, the, the doskin, kind of darker color. For the floor tile, the, the wood plank, again, very beachy, wood plank looking.
Yep.
And as far as the composite decking, which would be the handicap ramp coming into the building, it was the, the rock, no, it was the rocky.
Okay.
My glasses aren't strong enough to read the same word.
Rocky Harbor?
Thank you. I was going to say Rocky Horror, but I forgot.
Yeah, Rocky Horror.
Rocky Underditch.
Right, so, so those were the recommendations that I made to the engineer, but we just wanted to get everyone else's input, you know, if necessary. If not, if you guys are a little good with that, we'll just let the engineer know, and we'll start to get that stuck, and be ready to put it in.
Go for it, in my opinion.
Move it on to what we want to do.
Okay.
So, so where the A and B again, Karen?
So the cabinets were the shaker style.
Shaker.
Right.
The solid surface countertops, doskin. The floor tile, wood plank look. And the decking on the ramp heading into the building was the rocky harbor.
Rocky Harbor picture shot.
Yeah, that one's a first.
Well, I like that.
Can I make a recommendation, suggestion, please?
Sure.
Could we just go ahead with that and not pass the resolution? Because, I mean, all right, so say there's a, there's a backorder or something, and, or something's not available anymore, does that mean we have to come back again and repass another resolution? Because we're not doing things the way we officially-
You don't have a sample in your hand, how are you going to prove it?
I mean, yeah, this is, what do you think?
You have to, yeah, you have to have a resolution.
You do have a resolution.
Yes.
For the colors of the-
Yeah.
Okay, well, then let's do it, then, let's get it moving.
All right. You got that.
An easy reservation.
Ten minutes.
Okay. Go for it.
All right. The next is a request from the police chief to auction out-of-service vehicles on municipal. And I know there's some ongoing work involved, and there's more work ahead, from what I gather, in terms of what condition some of these vehicles were obtained under, but I don't know. We'll defer the chief of-
We currently have four vehicles, three Humvees and a five-ton. Two of the Humvees are located down at the water tower, down by DPW, two hardtop Humvees. The only time to get moved is when the DPW guys have to either tow them, fork them, push them, to move them that away, so they can get work done in their yard. They haven't used since I've been in charge of the department, and before that, I can't remember them ever getting used. They were in very bad shape, I think one had a fire in it. So we started looking into it, and those two, located down by the water tower, do belong to DOD, so they're not- So they're not for us to auction off. We got in touch with them. We'd have to do transfer papers, and we'd have to hire a grower to get it back to the base in Pennsylvania. So that's those two. Down at J Street, we have a Five-Ton and a soft-top Humvee. Again, the soft-top Humvee is not operational. I briefly talked to the mechanic this afternoon. That might need major work if we were gonna keep it. And once again, I can't remember the last time it ever moved. The Five-Ton is also ours. Again, I talked to the mechanic this morning briefly. He said he got to go over it right off the top of his head. He knows it needs batteries, brake work, and new tanks for the air brakes, I guess, to ride it out. Again, I can't remember the last time we used it, if ever. So those, we could probably auction. We're still trying to track down, you have titles for the Humvees. We have to get one for the Five-Ton.
Yeah, we have no paperwork on that?
I did talk to Murph Larkin last night, and I have a couple places to look. But either way, Tommy King informed me, shouldn't be the end of the world. That DOD will probably just send us the form, so we can put in a get, a new title.
There's a whole division up there called get tied off military vehicles.
Yeah.
But how do we come to positions? Of possessions after Sandy, right?
Correct. And I think it turned into, if it's free, I'll take three.
Junkyard. So you junkyard of military vehicles donated after Sandy?
Correct.
Excuse me, we have no need for it, all right?
I do not have a need for it.
Say no more. Say no more.
Well, Sandy hits again, I mean...
They ain't gonna run. They're not gonna run. You physically have to look at them. They're not in good shape. They're not gonna run. Need to lie...
The military can then know they're not moving vehicles anyway, like they did last time, I guess.
That's true. They did come in.
Yeah.
They took our people off Cape Corps. We didn't, we couldn't get out there. They did.
Yeah, so why do we need them?
And they're all over 30 years old.
We don't need them.
Yeah, refurbishing them and let them sit makes no sense.
Was there any issue that we have to return them to the military? That some of the people involved right around Sandy were indicating, but they didn't seem to have a definitive answer.
For returning them?
To the government, yeah.
Okay, we asked the question, and we believe we're gonna have to drain all the fluids out of the vehicles going back to the base. I talked to the mechanic about that also. We need a detail, gas, probably, whatever it is, probably fluid. Who knows? We're in fluid. Whatever they send us, I'll get to Eric, and he can give me a timeframe. And then the only expense is we'll have to get a price for a low boy to tow it back to Pennsylvania.
Nice gift.
But being free after all, chief.
Can we hear those Five-Ton, at the six to ten?
Well, the Five-Ton, if we truly own it, which I believe we do, you'd want to auction.
Oh, okay. I misunderstood. I thought they didn't do it as well. Okay. I know what we can do, man. Instead of oyster, build a bag of oyster shells, we'll just put them out in bay.
Yeah.
After we drain the fluids.
After we drain the fluids. That'll stop it.
So the process is starting, yeah. It's gonna take a while, but it's starting.
Anything else, then, on that issue?
I'm sorry.
Any other council members have any work session items? If not, we'll go into the audience if there are any public comments or questions or any work session items. If you have any, if you could... I, we do have, we have an add-on. There's a discussion as to the finalization of the scope of the boardwalk replacement project as it applies to the grant that we're in the process of applying for. And that's a grant through the state for the preservation and improvement of boardwalks. The engineer wanted our input on the scope of the work. You see the cover letter? And he wanted to finalize the application.
So what does he need from us? Authorization or money?
Need to finalize the scope. We already authorized him to fill out the application.
Yeah, we did.
So I don't, he wants, he says, does the governing body anticipate discussing the final scope of the boardwalk replacement? And he's seemingly, I mean, obviously, I think we'd want to apply for whatever the maximum is and deal with whatever their response may be. If they grant us that, then we have the entire project. And if not, we would have to bifurcate the most urgently needed aspects and then consider the funding for other aspects of the program and the project.
Right. We discussed this at Public Works, our last one, right, Eric? And we, Karen, you were there, too?
No, I wasn't.
Oh, you weren't there. Okay, I'm sorry. Well, the plans are, I mean, he has a pretty good plan. We've had plans around this borough for years, but we kind of scaled them down a little bit, I think, make it make sense from Fifth App to, to, I guess, K Street.
K Street.
And so this is just trying to take advantage of money that's out there, and we want to... Do you guys, excuse me, do you remember, did we discuss, you guys, about the replacing boards from Fifth to Fourteenth?
The older tracks, yes.
Would that be included in this as well?
We should ask for it, yes.
Yeah. So...
Yeah, it's 2,500 liter feet, both of the north and inside. It's not everywhere, but there is older tracks to lap.
And any restroom work that might go into this, too? So I guess, I guess that's what he's asking for, the authorization to...
Give us a proposal to...
For all of this?
Yes.
And he ends the letter, I guess he recognized just what you said. It's been studied and studied with the committee and otherwise. He said, we can proceed with the proposal, work with a verbal approval if necessary, so...
You guys okay with this?
Work with the Karen Dr. Liaison, call them up, and say, go ahead with it.
We don't know what work is gonna do, like the underpinnings.
That's included in this, though.
Okay. So it's concrete pilings, huh?
I don't know if it's concrete pilings.
Like they did on the pump, pump stations.
Yeah, I don't know. That's part of this design. I don't know if that's part of this design, though.
Yeah.
I don't believe it was.
It's not.
I don't think it was.
But, you know, it's, we're just trying to get money that's out there, and we want to get it going. Hit while the iron's hot.
Do you have a drop-in date for this submission?
He was implying, but he didn't say that the earlier you get it in, the better. That's what's not said in this letter.
It's kind of nebulous. I don't even know if the thing is really official.
They announced it August 15th, and it's now open. And there's, I think, a comment period up until the middle of September. But they're accepting applications in between them, even ask questions up until September the 15th, I think. But, but, yeah, the sooner the better, you know, let's get in line.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think cut them on immediately.
Yeah.
Moving forward.
Not next year, tomorrow.
Do you guys have anything to add to this? No? Okay.
Keys words for the application, resiliency.
Right. Stay about... Yeah. Yeah, I think hopefully our engineer knows that. We'll talk to him. Yeah, make sure it's... Okay.
All right, that...
We need a formal...
It says you can...
We already did, I thought.
Yeah, we did it once. I don't, we don't even have it as a potential resolution. It's just a verbal...
You know, we've done this, we have tests, so...
That was...
It was, right? Yeah, okay.
That then concludes the added item in the work session. So we'll go into the audience if there are any public comments or questions about any work session items, and if anyone has them, if you could please give your name and address into the record. Edie? Nope, Jim.
I'm too short. June Korsanestev, 1148. If you want to, the last time, I think, you passed a resolution about the boardwalk was the last meeting in 2019, before we were shut down. And it was raised for a solution, and it was something like $10 million. So go back and look for that. But on today's agenda, the benches, I think maybe you need to go back to the people that have already spent their money and have their plaques, and give them some input on the changes you're going to make. I was never told that my plaque would, you know, expire or something. So I think that's something you need to look at. And the other thing is, with this new community center, have you put in any thought about hours of operation, who's going to be allowed? The insurance, because that's an issue? And who's gonna clean it? And there's a lot of things that you need to think about before you finalize that.
Who's opening it? Who's closing it up each day?
Right, and who's allowed to be in it? How are you going to monitor it?
Do you need your facilities to get in there or not?
Right, okay, so it just...
Let me mow them. Just kidding.
I know.
Got that?
Couldn't get away.
Got that, Jim? All right.
Metro Copland 204, 10th Avenue. Just one more thing on the J Street Community Center. It's an observation and a suggestion. My observation, the number of times I go by J Street at parking lot, owned by the borough, we now know it's owned by the borough, they've got new ordinance regarding fines for illegal parking in it. My suggestion is for the next work session, you guys consider the potential use of that parking lot during the summer period as a parking facility. If you still feel the lifeguards and other beach patrol people need parking, it's a much better location to use and allow the lot on N Street to go back to what it was originally intended for, which is resale and revenue generating for the borough. So just a comment, and I suggest, and I don't know what I need to do to get it on the work session agenda, but I think it should be, because I know that people want to see N Street, and you guys want to keep parking for the lifeguards, and this may be a happy
Thank you. Edie?
Edie Plink, 48 Long Island Avenue. The bench program, I'm delighted to hear that you are reconsidering this. I'm not sure I like the idea of if I or my family were to donate the money to buy a bench, that you'd then be putting somebody else's plaque on it as well, so I think...
We wouldn't do that. We'd have to put the bench, you'd put your plaque on it.
I heard something up here about a second plaque on the bench.
If there's an existing bench, like there's an existing bench on the boardwalk right now, and you only want to buy the plaque, which would be several hundred dollars?
Oh, I see.
Then there's enough room for two plaques on an existing bench. If you buy the bench...
Then you buy your...
You buy the bench and the plaque, and that's it.
For 10 years, and then you get the first right of...
Is that true now for the people that have bought the benches and the plaques? Do they have a 10-year?
Twenty.
Right now it's 20.
Twenty. Okay. And my other question is, have we ever had a bench stolen in this town? I mean, those things, how much must they weigh?
We've had a lot.
Recycling ones are very light. We have them pulled down to the ground, going to the arena and the fourth and avenue.
Oh, okay.
All are very heavy, concrete benches.
Right.
All lined up all over the place, stacked on gemma pieces.
They get knocked over all the time.
Really? With those concretes on the side?
Yeah.
Wow, somebody's eating their wibies. Okay, thanks.
Any other comments on work session items? Hearing that, I'll close the work session. I'd entertain a motion from the council to adjourn the work session, take a brief moment, and then begin our regular meeting. Rush my councilmember Kraft. I'm gonna do, anyone opposed? If not, we'll stand adjourned momentarily.
We can stand, anyway.
I have a question from Cheryl.